Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's like having jury rights say the pledge with you there for a second.[42.12][42.12](Laughter) A little hesitation all the time. All right, let's see. First thing on our agenda is the roll call then here.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aloha.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Demmer.
Thank you. Next is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker, to adopt this evening's agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion is, or the agenda is adopted. So I've got two distractions. I'm not sure where my phone is and I don't think it's on silent.[95.72][95.72](Laughter)
Should I call you?
No, don't. So, all right, and then, all right, so we have six items under council business. I didn't even notice that that was, yes, council business, all right. Item one is to designate a council secretary. In 1994, council entered into an agreement with TimeSaver Offsite Secretarial, Inc. for recording and preparation of meeting minutes, and this agreement has been extended annually. The addendum for this year does reflect a rate increase of about 2.5%, which will result in a small increase for secretarial services, but the increase can be accommodated in the approved budget. Yeah. Any of you have any questions or?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20-1 Designating TimeSaver Offsite Secretarial, Inc. as Council Secretary for 2020, and that we approve the addendum to recording secretary services agreement.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Grisgoviac. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item two is to consider the council rules of procedure, and there isn't any change from previous years. As a reminder, the city manager is authorized to prepare a list of consent agenda items, but the mayor or any council member may request that a particular consent agenda item be removed from the consent list and placed on the regular agenda, and this action should be taken at the time the agenda is formally adopted, and the item will then be placed for consideration immediately after adoption of the remaining consent agenda items. As always, should the council have any questions regarding items posted on the final agenda, contact staff, and we will provide additional information before or during the council meeting. Any more questions? Okay. Your Honor. Councilmember Kicker.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-2 Establishing Council Rules of Procedure, and also to adopt the addendum to Resolution 20-2 Definitions and Explanations of City Council Order of Business.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Nice try.[259.62][259.62](Laughter)
Yeah, nice try. Get that under your head, yeah.
I was trying to time it.[263.62][263.62](Laughter)
All right. Number three is the designation of the official newspaper. The Anoka County Union Herald has submitted a proposal to serve as the city's legal newspaper for 2020. Their publication rates will remain the same as in 2019 at a rate of $10.75 per column inch. The Herald meets all requirements for serving as the legal newspaper.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-3 Designating the Anoka County Union Herald as the official newspaper for 2020.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item four is to consider the board and commission appointments for 2020. For the Arts Commission, there are still six vacancies, but we're looking at appointing Mary Ann Keane Chair, reappointing Amy, is it Kuchel, maybe? And William Reichenborn and Donna Carson to the Arts Commission. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals, there is one vacancy there, and we're looking at appointing Aaron Van de Lindy Chair. Terry Spano Madden and Patricia Thorpe will be reappointed to that committee. Civil Service Commission, we have one vacancy, and we're appointing Bob Thistle Chair. Historical Commission, Luanne Koskinen will be Chair and reappointing Jackie Dingly to the committee. Parks and Recreation Commission, there are still two vacancies, but we'll also be reappointing Neil Livermore, and he's also the Chair of Parks and Recreation, and reappointing Ryan McAlpine. Planning Commission, reappointing Wayne Schwartz as Chair and reappointing Ray Knoblock to the Commission. Safety Commission, there are four vacancies on that. We're appointing Al Hofstadt Chair and reappointing Arnie Alderman to that Commission. And then there are two vacancies on the Sustainability Commission. We're looking to reappoint and designate Stacy Demmer as Chair, and then reappoint Kristy Lamaro and Rebecca Homeland to the Sustainability Commission.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that the council adopt the following resolutions. Adopt Resolution 20-4 Approving Annual Appointments to the Arts Commission. Adopt Resolution 20-5 Approving Annual Appointments to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Adopt Resolution 20-6 Approving Annual Appointments to the Police and Firefighters Civil Service Commission. Adopt Resolution 20-7 Approving Annual Appointments to the Historical Commission. Adopt Resolution 20-8 Approving Annual Appointments to the Parks Commission. Adopt Resolution 20-9 Approving Annual Appointments to the Planning Commission. Adopt Resolution 20-10 Approving Annual Appointments to the Safety Commission. And finally, adopt Resolution 20-11 Approving Annual Appointments to the Sustainability Commission.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I'd just like to point out, there is quite a few vacancies, and I just wanted to point out that if, you know, it's great to have full representation from our community on these commissions. Perhaps we could make a note of it in our next newsletter. I know one just came out.
Mr. Chair, at the same time, I would, you know, encourage people to get involved, and I would like to thank those who are serving on our commissions and have stepped up again to be reappointed, and it's, these are all volunteer, and they're taking of their time to help our city, and so we truly do appreciate their service.
Absolutely. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item five, and on that last item, all of those are on our city website, right? Isn't there an application there as well?
There is.
Okay, so, somebody that's interested, and we would encourage you to take a look. Thank you. Item five is council appointments. Each year, council makes appointments to certain organizations. Council is being asked to make the 2020 appointments at this time. We're looking at the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council. 2019 appointments are Councilmember Wells and Chief Brad Wise. Councilmember Johnson is the alternate. Anoka Hennepin Community Ed Advisory Council, 2019 appointments, Councilmember Demmer. Councilmember Grisgoviac is the alternate. Local governmental official, local government of information systems, Logis, 2019 appointments, City Manager Matt Stemwaddle, IT Manager Dave Sack, and Councilmember Geisler alternates. Oh, I'm sorry, Dave Sack and Councilmember Geisler alternates. Minnesota Metro North Tourism, which is TC Gateway, 2019 appointments, Mayor Cook and City Manager Matt Stemwaddle. Swans Superink Joint Board, 2019 appointments, Councilmember Wells and Public Works Director Tim Himber. Councilmember Kicker is the alternate. Anoka County Fire Protection Council, 2019 appointments were Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Wells alternate. Coon Rapids Fire Relief Association, the 2019 appointments were Councilmember Geisler, Chief John Piper, and Accounting Manager Fran Hanson. North Metro Mayor's Association, the 2019 appointments were Mayor Cook and City Manager Matt Stemwaddle, as required by association bylaws. And then Youth First Community of Promise, 2019 appointments, Councilmembers Geisler and Kicker, with Councilmember Johnson and Recreation Supervisor Ryan Gunderson alternate. So, do we want to, same slate? Does anybody have any changes they would like to make?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I, I'm going to request that I am not reappointed to the Youth First Community of Promise.
Okay.
Board.
All right. Right now, Ryan Gunderson is an alternate, correct?
Right. And I would, Ryan has participated in those meetings and has, his schedule allows him to participate, and I would recommend flipping and putting him as the board member.
Okay, oh, because we have one appointment and then two alternates.
Two appointments, so Councilmember Kicker would still.
Oh, two appointments, Geisler and Kicker, okay.
And then.
Oh, and then two alternates, I see, okay.
And we don't have to have two alternates, so we could have just the one.
Any other suggestions, requests, changes? Anything we want to assign Wade, since he's not here at all?[708.01][708.01](Laughter)
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
If you bring up Wade.[712.23][712.23](Laughter) He did, I did remember him talking about making a switch on the Community Advisory Commission and having myself as the member and then him as the alternate, but since he's not here right now, I can't confirm that, so I think we're okay to just leave it alone. We alternate back and forth on every other meeting. I just, I can't confirm it.
All right, sounds good.
Is there anything that prohibits us from having co-chairs?
We don't have any chairmanships here, right?
Well, I mean, as representatives on that group.
Mayor, council, I'm not sure with that particular appointment what the guidelines or bylaws of that group would suggest. My guess is the city gets one official voting member, which is why we appoint one official member. You know, if, if at the meeting vote were there and they only get one vote, only one could vote anyway, and so I don't know if it makes a material difference to, that if you split it and said they were both appointed to that commission as opposed to saying one's an alternate and one's the official appointment.
No, I, I'm just offering up.
I think it's just a matter, at the meeting, you only get one vote, I believe.
Okay.
Just offering up the idea.
All right.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would make the motions to adopt Resolution 20-15 Appointing Chief of Police and Councilmember Wells to the joint, Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council. Adapting Resolution 20-16 Appointing Councilmember Demmer to the Anoka Hennepin District 11 Community Education Advisory Council with Councilmember Grisgoviac as this alternate. Resolution 20-17 Appointing City Manager Stemwaddle to Logis with alternates of, oh, an alternate of IT Manager Dave Sack and Councilmember Geisler, myself. Resolution 20-18 and the Metro North Tourism Twin City Gateway there, making those appointments as Mayor Cook and City Manager Stemwaddle. And appointment, adopting Resolution 20-19 Appointing to the Swans Superink Joint Board, Councilmember Wells and Public Works Director Tim Himmer and Councilmember Kicker as an alternate. Adapting Resolution 20-20 Appointing to the Anoka County Fire Protection Council, Councilmember Johnson, and then Councilmember Wells as the alternate. And Resolution 20-21, the Coon Rapids Fire Relief Association, Councilmember Geisler, Council Chief John Piper, and Accounting Manager Fran Hanson. Adapting Resolution 20-22 and the North Metro Mayor's Association Appointing Mayor Cook and City Manager Stemwaddle. And then at Resolution 20-23, Representatives for the Youth First Community of Promise, Councilmember Kicker and Recreation Supervisor Ryan Gunderson as appointments with Councilmember Johnson as the alternate.
Second.
Okay, motion by Geisler, second, what?
Got them all.
Yeah.[936.32][936.32](Laughter) It was so long, I forgot it was a motion.[938.13][938.13](Laughter) Motion by Kicker. Discussion?
Just a quick question.
Councilmember Johnson.
On Resolution 20-15 that relates to the Joint Law Enforcement Council, does that resolution include the alternate position as well that I've occupied for a few years now?
Oh, sorry if I missed that. So, yes, that would be included in the motion.
Okay.
Good thing you were here to defend yourself tonight.[965.13][965.13](Laughter)
Trying to catch them all.
All right. Change so noted. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And then item six is to designate our official depositories and investment collateral management procedures. State statutes allow, state statutes allow the city council to authorize the treasurer or chief financial officer, wow, to designate depositories for city funds and to manage the collateral for those funds. The attached resolution designates Wells Fargo Bank, Minnesota, N.A. as the official depository and authorizes the finance director to designate additional depositories for investment purposes, approve wire transfer agreements with the depositories, and manage the collateral as prescribed by state statute. The city is currently evaluating its long-term banking needs, and staff will make a future recommendation to the city council about whether to maintain services with Wells Fargo or to switch to a different bank. That analysis is ongoing, so, yeah.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a, a motion to adopt Resolution 20-24 Designating Depositories and Investment Collateral Management Procedures.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Item seven is to consider approval of the minutes of the December 17th, 2019 meeting. Everybody should have a slightly amended set that came out today, two minor little changes in there.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells.
Move to approve the minutes of December 17th.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Kicker. Discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstained.
And that motion carries. One abstention, Councilmember Geisler. We are on to our consent agenda. Item eight, to adopt the revised Resolution 19-141 Approving a Gambling Premise Permit for Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association at Leonard's Bar and Grill. At the December 17th meeting, we approved a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association for Leonard's. State charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved by resolution by the city council. The Minnesota Gambling Control Board has indicated that the standard language in the resolution be revised and resubmitted to them for final approval. At the Minnesota Gambling Control Board's recommendation, the following text is being removed, so we're striking "and must be valid for a two-year license period," apparently.
Mr. Mayor, council members, yes, there was a change of staff at the control board, and they don't like that wording and won't approve it, so this is why we need to have an amended one.
I thought I was having a little deja vu there when I saw the packet for this week.[1173.01][1173.01](Laughter) All right. So we're looking to adopt the revised Resolution 19-141, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association at Leonard's Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, contingent upon the approval of a liquor licensing to Leonard's Bar and Grill.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Do we know when they're gonna open?
Mr. Mayor, he's working on it.[1213.33][1213.33](Laughter)
Got that, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Item nine is to consider vacations of the public roadway and utility easements for Port Riverwalk. The HRA currently has a purchase agreement with Central Homes to develop the HRA-owned Port Riverwalk site on the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard near Avast Street with 136 detached townhomes. Mr. Brody, or you want to just give us the highlights here? We're up to, are we, is it, are we done with this yet, or what's going on?
Well, we're hopefully gonna be done with it tonight.[1258.23][1258.23](Laughter) We did finally, through some negotiations with Excel, able to have them withdraw their objections, so we're able to proceed forward with the three remaining vacations tonight, so we're gonna ask that we open the public hearing, or not open it, can, to finish our public hearing, if there are any comments, and then close that, and then take action. Obviously, we're recommending that the, that you go forward with the vacations. It does require a four-fifths majority, so just as an aside, I'd like to thank Councilmember Johnson, city clerk, the city manager, the CTN cable for setting up that. It's always a complicated process to get us here today, but we do need the sixth vote in order to, to do this. We're also gonna, as you've noted, we have an HRA meeting afterwards. We're gonna, in some ways, give those easements right back to Excel, but on a more temporary basis than ones that can be, that can be terminated by just an agreement of the parties, and that's been outlined, and so this will take care of one additional step as we get towards trying to close this at the end of the month. And so, with that, I'll open to any questions. Otherwise, like I said, it's been a little bit of a long process on these three vacations, and so I think we're finally at the conclusion of them.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Brody before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Just a clarification, this is a little bit different than the packet that came out last week, so there was discussions either Friday or today with Excel that got us to this point? Is that what happened?
There was. They were in agreement to, in principle, with the idea, and then they just simply wanted to kind of use their easement form, and we reviewed it and were comfortable with it, and they put it all into one agreement versus, or one easement versus the five that we initially proposed.
Okay.
And that's what you'll see at the HRA meeting.
Got it. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you all for all the good work.
Yeah, all right. So with that, the public hearing is open on the vacations of the public roadway and utility easements for Port Riverwalk. Is anybody here to address counsel for the vacations of the easements in Port Riverwalk or the utility easements? It'd be surprising if somebody showed up.[1390.01][1390.01](Laughter) Seeing no one is here, we're gonna close the public hearing. And, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolutions 20-12, 20-13, and 20-14 Vacating Public Roadway and Utility Easements, and the vacations commenced on the initiative of the city require the four fifths, so we're, that's what we're looking for.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. When did we start this?[1435.76][1435.76](Laughter) It seems like this has been on every meeting since like August or something.
I think it's our third one.
Since October.[1442.23][1442.23](Laughter) But it does seem like August.
Progress.
All right. Under New Business, item 10, to consider introduction of an ordinance amending the city code, Chapter 7-300 Drug Paraphernalia. Somebody wanna cover the highlights, or you want me to just read the discussion points, or?
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is what we discussed at the December 3rd work session, and the proposal will just further define drug paraphernalia. I'll answer any questions you may have, it's just an intro tonight.
Okay. All right. Council, any questions? Okay. Is that what you guys are here for?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So what we're doing tonight is, this is just an introduction, and then, then we can have our conversations about it. We weren't really prepared to take any public testimony tonight. We, we are free to contact any of us individually, or will we be, when we consider the ordinance, will we?
We typically don't take public comment when we take the ordinance, but obviously that's up to you as a body and how you want to handle that. It's not our normal practice, so we don't set aside typical time. They obviously have an opportunity to contact you individually, contact the city with any information that they want to provide.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm just, is, is there one person that's, that has something that they want to say here, or is everybody planning on speaking, or what's going on here?
Yeah.
Because I wouldn't mind if, it would, it would be out of order, but, but it seems like they would like to address council, but everybody be okay if we gave them three minutes?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I know, the open mic is usually for stuff that's not on the agenda, but would that be a, an avenue for this too? Because.
Well, it'd already be a deviation since this is on the agenda.
True.
Yeah, typically, we wouldn't do this.
Again, our normal practice is not to allow for public comment, but again, this is your council.
Right.
You're the governing body.
Let's see what Councilmember Wells has to say.[1588.01][1588.01](Laughter)
Your Honor, I agree with you. They're here, and, and I guess I wouldn't mind hearing an opposing opinion, you know, so that we have that to consider in two weeks.
Okay. All right, so.
No objection.
Okay, thanks. So, why don't we do this, and we'll, we'll go with three minutes maximum, and if you just come up to the mic, and it can be more than one of you then, and come up and give us your name and address, and, and, yep, up to the ambo up there, and please provide your name and your address, and then, and then limit your comments to three minutes.
How do you work?
Oh, you're on.
My name is Wael Sakalh, W-A-E-L, last name S-A-K-A-L-L-H. I own a store called Hideaway Outlet in Coon Rapids. I'm not sure what the address is. I have multiple businesses.
Okay.
We reached to the city, first letter we received from, from them regard the drug paraphernalia and the definition of it, and we met with the city attorney and lady from the city license, we talked about it, and all what we need, we're not here to challenge, like, you know, the code, drug paraphernalia, it's a drug paraphernalia, period. You know, we're not trying to make a drug paraphernalia legal. It should be illegal.
Okay.
You know, it's.
This is a good start.
Yeah, it's not about that. It's not about that. But, you know, we all understand, you know, things change, you know. We asked him, what's your definition of a drug paraphernalia? They said pipes used for marijuana, but marijuana is legal now in Minnesota.
Medical.
Medical, yeah, that's number one, and marijuana with less TFC, it's legal. I have a license through the state, I grow marijuana with less TFC, I have a processing license, I sell it, it's legal. And I provide the license to the city, and I asked him, like, did you consider it to look at the license? They haven't responded to us. So we need to understand, what's your definition of products to use for marijuana, or intentionally use for marijuana, or legal, illegal drugs, or, we need like a clear definition. You know, they, even in the city ordinance, said like envelope, consider as for marijuana, balloons? I mean, is it because, I had, like, on the sign said, smoke shop, that's mean everything in the item's supposed to be very smoking. If you're saying envelope, it's a drug paraphernalia. I mean, this is in Office Max, this is in Target, this is everything. I mean, I'm not trying to tell you guys, there is intention from people, could use this stuff for drugs, for sure, you know, but I'm not in a position sitting in the store to tell people, oh, this is for drugs. I mean, if the city send an undercover, that's what's supposed to be, and find out the store selling products for people use it for drugs, that's definitely, it's a drug paraphernalia. But you tell me, you come to the store, you tell me, okay, this is legal, this is not illegal, this is like, I have no idea, I'm not here to make a decision for people what to buy this stuff. I came to the city of Coon Rapids two years ago. I commit with the city, we have evidence, email, like, if we allowed to open a store selling glass pipes and smoking accessory, they said, no, you have to have a tobacco license. I don't want to sell tobacco, but to sell this stuff, you have to have tobacco license, sure. sure, we applied for a tobacco license, we've been open for 20 years. All of a sudden, the city of, of Coon Rabbit, wake up one morning, said, you know what? I want you to move all these pipes out of your store. What did I do wrong? I've been selling, there is no complaint. Sure, there is a drugs problem in Coon Rabbit, every city has a drug problem, many outlets, everywhere, everywhere, but people never seen in my life, somebody walk into the store, whoa, he's selling glass pipe, I'm gonna start smoking drugs. Never been happened like that. It's a smoke shop selling all kind of a smoking accessory.
Okay.
That's all what they're doing. What I want, I want the city considering and looking at the people has license, and the changing of the law and changing of things, and if they have evidence, if this is store selling this stuff for intention to use for drugs, go ahead, shut me down, I'm fine, but we're not here to make this decision.
Okay.
Just consider it, take some time, think about it, and make the rule you want it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name is Nathan Snyder, I'm attorney on behalf of Coon Rapids Tobacco, they operate at this store located at 12475 Riverdale Boulevard, D in Coon Rapids, I live in Oakdale, but neither here nor there, I guess I'm here on behalf of my client, we've been reaching out to, uh, the city attorney and city clerk's office for, I mean, since July, trying to get a dialogue open, as I believe the same letter that, um, previous citizen referenced, that the city was going to change its enforcement of what constitutes drug paraphernalia. We objected this over questions of how this would be enforced, uh, that's kind of why we're here now, is we've been tracking this and have noticed that there is the proposed amendment. Again, we don't dispute that there should be regulations in place for drug paraphernalia, it should not be legal, but the question comes down to the enforcement against retail tobacco stores, and that's where kind of the questions arise under the current ordinance, it's unclear whether or not there is a carve-out for these products, or what products for one of those establishments, and so that's kind of where we're looking for some guidance from the city on how it would enforce this ordinance, or any paraphernalia ordinance for that matter, as, I mean, basically, we've tried to open a dialogue, schedule a meeting, to go to the store, and then to figure out, okay, which products can and can't be sold, just so my client knows, so their license isn't at stake here, because that's kind of been the issue, is, and at the grapevine, we had heard that, okay, we're not going to enforce this as we threatened in, I think it was a July letter, but if you do sell this stuff after, I think it was August 19th, at that point, we're just not going to renew your license, and so we objected to that, uh, and I guess kind of as, a closing, my last point would just be that, to the extent this does impact the retail tobacco license, don't believe that there's been proper notice provided to the licensees under MinSat 46119, to basically try and see if there are more affected businesses, and to see what they would have to say about this as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, very good, thank you. So, so I think what we'll do is, we'll consider this introduced, and then we'll have to come back to this and figure out if we need to have another conversation about it, or... Okay, so with that, we'll consider, um, ordinance amending city code, Chapter 7-300, drug paraphernalia, introduced.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say thank you for your comments, it's appropriate for us to hear, um, from the business owners that would be affected, and I appreciate having that information prior to making any decision.
I just realized, next item on the agenda is open mic anyway, so it didn't matter. I went to go to the next page, there wasn't any more pages. All right. Is anybody here to address, uh, counsel for open mic this evening, something that's not on this evening's agenda? All right, then we'll move past that, and we are on to other business. I know we, we have a concert coming up Thursday night, um, if I knew where my phone was, I could tell you who it was.
Good Feet Express.
Good Feet Express, all right.
And we have a blood drive tomorrow at City Hall from 2:00 to 7:00, so if you, I think you probably can go sign up, and my hunches are still a few spots available, and that they would take walk-ins if you show up.
All right. Now, conveniently, Mr. Hember isn't here tonight to ask about Hanson Bridge. It's open, he doesn't have to come back, I guess.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's, it's rough, but it's open, and that's okay. Now, the biggest thing is just remember that it's open. Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll drive, be driving in front of the high school going, oh, I forgot. All right, other business, come before counsel?
Mayor?
Councilmember Greskovic?
Something that just came to my mind while these folks are here from the tobacco business. Recently, the age of first, uh, tobacco has been raised nationally from 18 to 21, so I'm wondering, maybe the question for, for our police, is there any enforcement issues with that, being that there was, there's no grandfather clause or anything like that? How, how are we doing on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? I'll take that one as the responsible person for the tobacco licensing. We started receiving phone calls immediately after it's got broadcast that it had been approved, and we told them all it's 21. Additionally, a letter has been sent to all license holders telling them to come into compliance with the federal law of the age of 21.
Yeah, Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor and counsel, we also talked about it at some point soon, we will revise our ordinance, just, well, we will suggest revising our ordinance to mirror what federal law says. It's typical when these changes have been made either at state or federal level, that we would update our ordinance sometime after that, and so that'll come down the road in the next meeting or two, I would imagine.
Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
We have time for hypothetical questions. I mean, I'm curious, isn't marijuana still legal federally, but how many states have legalized it, and the federal government does nothing? I'm just curious, people are choosing to enforce this, where, you know, if you're one of the states that thinks marijuana's cool, you, uh, you don't enforce that, even though it's federal law.
I'm gonna treat that as a rhetorical question. I haven't thought a whole lot about that particular piece of how, you know, because they did raise it to 21 on tobacco, and everybody seems like, yes, we're gonna enforce that, but you're right when states turn around and say, yes, we're gonna legalize marijuana. Um, I would disagree with some of the contentions that he made about what's legal in the state of Minnesota now, but yeah, that's the route that people are going, and obviously, the federal government has not changed its position on that. And so for this particular one, I think we're all in agreement, and we're gonna be consistent with federal law on the tobacco wage, and we'll amend the ordinance that way, and then I guess marijuana will take it when Minnesota does, if it does change and allow for recreational marijuana, I, I guess we'll have to deal with it at that point, but I don't know, we can't really enforce federal law here, and if, you know, and apparently, they're not enforcing it, or the feds aren't taking any actions against states for those that legalize it, so I'm not really sure what the answer would be to that question yet.
I just wanted to point out that you can pretty much enforce what laws you want.
All right. I was actually, Councilmember Wells, thinking the same thing, is that this federal law, in, in fact, really preempts the ordinance that we have right now, and if we made a change to our ordinance, we can't change that federal law, we have to be in compliance with that, and the fact that they didn't provide any grandfather clause like they did when they changed the drinking age, so, just some questions that I'm getting on this.
Yeah, we can't be less restrictive, we can be more restrictive, we could make the, we could make the age 25 if we wanted, but, uh, I don't see that happening. All right, any other business to come before counsel? Hearing none?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Geisler to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned.